Hey everyone, welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting for Monday, March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at seven o'clock. I will call this meeting to order, reminding folks that the meetings of the Berlin Select Board are recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access and YouTube channels. That your voice, your image, and your telephone number may be recorded. I did put together sort of an abbreviated agenda for tonight. We've had a bunch of long meetings and the two of you attended a very long meeting on Wednesday night. So I was trying to keep tonight's at least a little focused. So at the start of the meeting, I think I want to get a motion and vote to open up the annual town meeting warrant, because there might be a need to make adjustments to it before the end of the meeting.
So you'd like a motion to open the town meeting, the annual town meeting warrant?
Correct.
So moved.
Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
Great, let's look at meeting minutes from March twentieth. The minutes for the twenty-second actually looks like a email, not really minute. Oh, for the, but anyway, we have minutes to approve.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the March twentieth, twentieth open session meeting minutes and the March twenty-second open session meeting minutes, which was a joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
Second.
I think we're then ready to vote. Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
Great, we have general public comment. If you're in the audience would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand. I'll keep an eye open for that, but I think we might start working into old business, which is the two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep this really quickly for you this evening. The board has not yet taken a vote on the ACABIT assessment, which is set. The FinCom has voted with the understanding that it is a per pupil assessment. It is a large increase given the increase in students. There are nine more students attending. So that number is going from five eighty-one, four twenty in FY twenty-three to seven oh five, three ninety-eight in FY twenty-four, which is an increase of one twenty-three, nine seventy-eight.
Let's actually, yeah, let's take these lines one by one tonight, just to be clear. Unless, do you want to include the capital, assessment capital, ACABIT capital in that one as well?
Yes.
Do you have a spreadsheet you can share so that people in the audience can sort of see the numbers we're talking about?
Absolutely. Hold on just a moment. Are you able to see that?
Yep.
Great. So the other line, that's line ninety-nine is the ACABIT operating assessment, if you will, and then there's the capital assessment, which is the sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy. That's the annual assessment for cap debt service that has gone down to sixty-six, one seventy, goes down a little bit every year. So the shirt went down two thousand and seven dollars.
Would you like a motion on those two?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve line item ninety-nine, ACABIT assessment and one hundred ACABIT capital assessment.
Seconded.
I think this one is pretty straightforward, so I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
Great. I'd actually like to jump down to line one oh nine if we could, because that one is a relatively simple one. We are going to talk about the health insurance renewal that will generate a little bit of savings, but unfortunately, we've had a number of folks pick up the plan in FY twenty-three that were actually, believe it or not, in the last two months that were not accounted for when the numbers were run for chapter thirty-two B back in December. So I'm actually going to recommend that we stay level at the seven thirty-four, eight twenty-five. That is a ten and a half percent increase, which we're hoping we will only be at a four point seven, I believe it is, percent increase. Hold please. Yes, four point seven percent increase. But this would still be there to account for the additional two family plans and three single plans that we've had added on to the insurance. So I would like to keep it at the recommended amount of seven thirty-four, eight twenty-five.
And, and if we vote the four percent increase, will this be adjusted?
It wouldn't be adjusted because that's going to basically leave us with no room for anyone else who would add on to the plan if we adjust it down.
Okay.
So if no one adds on to the plan in the next year, that money will flow to free cash. But that right now, the way it sits, we have no buffer whatsoever for anyone adding to the plan. Dennis always budgeted extra spots to make sure, because people could add the plan mid-year. Those spots were taken up and then some in FY twenty-three. So we are literally have enough to fund the people who are currently on the plan and no more.
Nice call, good call.
So generating that additional savings gives us that little bit of a buffer should we add another family or single plan.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve line item one oh nine, chapter thirty-two P, thirty-two B as presented.
Seconded.
I think it's good too. So Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
I think if we, Christopher, I suggest that we work sort of from one oh five backwards to one oh one, which I think is going to be the biggest debate.
Sure. So one oh five is set to Honto debt repayment for the building. It is a set amount at four hundred forty-two thousand, seven fifty-two. And their capital, I don't know if you want to take one oh four and one oh five, they're both sort of capital, if you will. They are broken out separately because one is debt, one, and then the capital assessment itself, the two eleven, five ninety-nine comes from free cash.
And, and then to be fair, the five eighteen from fiscal year twenty-three, that included the debt repayment. And so this, this four forty-two is not a new thing. It's just breaking it out as its own sort of line.
Correct, which was recommended by the town accountant.
Yep, yep, and, and makes sense. And then the two eleven, there'll be an offsetting when we do the vote that two eleven, five ninety-nine is coming out of free cash, not out of added taxes.
Correct.
Okay.
And that does fund their full request for Berlin's portion of their FY twenty-four capital plan, which is point three four two nine percent.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve line item one oh five and one oh four, which is the capital to Honto capital assessment and the to Honto debt repayment.
Seconded.
I think we're ready to vote on that then. Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
Okay, now we get into the last three line items. Well, Scott, do you want to just jump actually to one oh two? To, to talk about BMS?
I, I, I think we can finish up the Honto and then we can do BMS as a, as a piece, because, yeah.
Okay, so to Honto, this is a, this is where we were thinking and what the FinCom had, had a five-hour meeting last Wednesday and the went very in-depth and detailed, trying to figure out the best way to address this. The Boylston FinCom approved a number for to Honto of three million, two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-one. So it was the recommendation of the FinCom to do basically a four percent tax increase, which would enable us to fully fund that request for to Honto. And as we'll get to partially fund the requested amount for Berlin Memorial. Doesn't fully fund the school's requests for both schools, but what it does is it doesn't mess up Boylston. It takes half of the issue off the table. So that would be my recommendation would be to fund the to Honto assessment so that we're on the same page with Boylston.
And, and so the three oh two, oh six, three eighty-one is sort of does match with the school board has requested for our portion of to Honto, correct?
So it's actually a little bit lower. The school in Boylston, the school presented a budget to us and then they presented a slightly higher one when they actually took their final vote. Their higher budget was about seven thousand dollars more than this three two oh six. And it added some additional teachers. Boylston did not recommend that budget. They recommended the previous budget that did not include those additional positions.
So when this goes to press, then the recommended column or the, the requested column, which is, I don't know, I think B.
Oh, yeah, I should.
It's going to three, which, which will be their requested number that are recommended. It's going to be the three million, two hundred and six thousand, three eighty-one.
Yes, and I can, yeah, I can give you that number. I'll make that correction on there. That was their old request. Sorry.
The numbers changed every time we talked, so yes.
A bit.
So you want to do this one separately?
Yes, so I think we'll just do line one, two, one oh three.
Okay, make a motion to do line, approve line one oh three to Honto assessment.
Seconded.
And so I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
And line one oh two is a, as you'll see, a significant increase. This is the Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment. This is a recommendation by the Capitol Committee. It has also been recommended by the FinCom to approve four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars in capital funding for Berlin Memorial. There were a number of items in their operating assessment that truly were capital items. It was most appropriate to remove those from the operating assessment, put them in capital and fund them that way. We are a bit more stable on the free cash side this year, and that does not impact the taxpayers. So I think as a show, especially of good faith, we wanted to try to fund what we could, particularly when capital looks at buildings and preventative maintenance and all of that good stuff in part. So that was the recommendation was four sixty-eight, four ten, which is an increase of four hundred thousand, four ten over the sixty-eight thousand funded in FY twenty-three.
But it does include sort of a big project like, there's a big roof repair in that one, isn't there?
There is. So it includes a two hundred and seventy, some odd thousand dollars roof repair on the small roof. And then next year, there's actually going to be an over million dollar request for the rest of the roof. So there's a good amount coming down the pipe.
So again, right, but it is a partial, but also the four sixty-eight again is what they've requested, correct?
That is what they've requested. And in fact, the Capitol Committee decided to pull in one request that they had put in an FY twenty-five, which was twenty thousand dollars to repave the walkway in the playground, because they did feel that was a liability issue. So they really did try to work with them on that.
Okay, good.
So motion to approve line item one oh two, Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment.
Seconded.
Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
So, but not least, that leaves us with the big question here, which is the FinCom has recommended going up to this four percent increase in taxes in order to try to fund the difference here between what was requested at BMS and what the budget could handle. You know, as you'll see, there's still, no, and I apologize, I did the same thing here with BMS, though. I will give you their full, actually, if you give me one second. I have, I believe I corrected that on here. Let me just pull up the spreadsheet. We were playing around with the numbers late into the night, so my apologies on that one. So.
And while we're doing that, I, I want to be clear that, that any increase we're giving BMS and frankly, any increase we give any department comes from taxes, like that, that there's, there's no printing press at town offices that could suddenly just print money if we decide to spend more money. That really any increase anywhere in this budget generally comes from increased taxes. We do have some free cash we use for capital items, but that's generally not used for operations and we don't have unlimited amounts of that either. And if we like drain that fairly fully, we don't have the money potentially for a like, oh, fire trucks that come up that are quite expensive or, or roofs, that you just pointed out might be a million dollars next year. And so these increases for, you know, ACABIT, to Honto and Berlin Memorial and, you know, increases across anywhere in this budget come from increased taxes.
Correct. And I'm just pulling this up here. Sorry, it's taking me.
I have heard more than once, and I'm usually not the person who hears these things, because Peg, you hear these things way more than I do, that somehow that there's this pool of money that we can use to fund this. And I just want to be clear, there is no pool of money.
Correct. And I think that that was a misconception, however you want to do it, you know, AKA game of telephone, I whispering areas, but by the time it comes out, Kristen, it's totally different. But, you know, I, last week was a long meeting, but a good meeting. You know, much discussion, you know, between, we simply can't afford to push the nine hundred dollar plus increase of taxes on the residents of town. You know, we're looking out for the kids, but we also have to look out to the residents. And, you know, I think, Kristen, you said it was around five forty, give or take-ish for a tax increase. So I don't think anyone was really truly happy with that news at all, but as other Scott said, you know, we have to, we have to make some considerations, you know, if we go the four percent increase in taxes, which equates to, you know, roughly nine percent increase for to Honto and BMS. It's a little less than what Boylston is forking in, but you know, realistically, there can be no expectation to push forth an eighteen percent increase in a thousand dollar increase. So it's, the numbers went from just give them two point five to give them eighteen to somewhere in the middle. And, you know, Kristen, much to her credit was playing number queen. We had yardsticks, we were pointing, we were moving items around. We threw out just about every potential scenario.
That spreadsheet got a little messed up, so I apologize about that.
No, I mean, it, it was, it was just one of those nights, but you know, again, Boylston went up four percent increase taxes. You know, Berlin, we thought that was a no one liked it, but a fair number to increase our taxes.
Right. So a, and basically, as you can see, the requested number for Berlin, and I'm just actually trying to pull up the percentage here, because I kind of oops, I made it huge. It's a twenty-nine point four percent increase over FY twenty-three for the Berlin Memorial Assessment here. If we basically back into that number with a four percent tax increase, leaving everything that we have left on the table going to BMS, we can actually fund it with a nine point one percent increase. Oops, sorry, hold on. This is, this got messed up here, too. This is what happens when I do numbers on the fly. I apologize. This is three. This is the three, one, two, three, two, oh, six. Three eighty-one. There we go. That's why that was deficit. So basically, as you just approved the to Honto at the three two oh six, three eighty-one, that's an eight point nine percent increase. They had requested a nine point two percent increase, but Boylston did go with the, that number, that increased number that reflects that as well on their older budget. So that basically leaves us with a nine percent, nine point one percent increase that we can do for BMS. We've done about historically four to six percent per year. A lot of this is driven by special education. That twenty-nine percent, I will say, they did have a number of out-of-district students that came in in the month of March that drove that number up. But this is basically where the FinCom landed. Like Peg said, we, we played around a lot with the numbers and Boylston is doing a four percent increase. And the FinCom felt that Berlin could do the same. Boylston actually has some commercial new growth that's fairly significant, so they're able to fully fund the school's request off of just a four percent tax increase. Unfortunately for us, that is not the case. We would have to do a nine point seven percent total tax increase instead of a four percent, or originally it was a two and a half in order to make up that difference. So, and that would mean we're closer to nine hundred and fifty to a thousand dollar tax increase.
And then Kristen, again, the, the Boylston for their elementary school, they did not, they, there was not a twenty-nine point four percent increase requested for Boylston Elementary School.
No, I believe it was closer to twenty.
Right. And so the, the, this three point nine million dollar number is also the one that FinCom has recommended as well at this point, correct?
That is correct. So that is what basically is left over when you do a four percent increase. That is giving them everything that we have left.
Scott, we didn't want to vote without you, so that's why we did it.
Select Board didn't vote, yeah.
Yep.
We wanted to wait until tonight.
Yeah, and, and sadly, on, on Wednesday, ended up busy till about ten o'clock, and it was torn about going over. I figured if I went over at ten, if you're still there, I might have you guys go back backwards to re-explain where you got to. And I didn't want you to do that if you're already at ten o'clock, so.
No, we had pretty much gone through the candy supply and the cookie supply, so I think it was just sugar at ten o'clock, so.
You're a bit of a loopy.
Well, I, I. I think you guys landed at a really great spot, so.
I, I appreciate the extra night to think about it, too, because at nine thirty, ten o'clock, you know, my brain was like mush. So it really, you know, then I get up the next morning and I thought, yeah, okay, I can support this.
Mine too, Chris. Hence the state of my spreadsheet.
I, I know there's a separate issue sort of related about warrant articles, but I, I think it's okay to vote potentially on this number here, and then we can figure out if we want to do something else, if that's okay with, with you, Chris and Peg.
Sure.
So I'll make a motion to approve line one oh one, the Berlin Memorial Assessment.
Seconded.
I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins, I?
Keith, I?
Stone, I?
So you now have a balanced budget with a four percent overall tax increase and that balances out to nine percent for each of the schools.
Now, we need to make this clear that just because we said for a four percent budget, four percent tax increase, nine percent school increase, that the vote could still come through from the residents who come to town meeting and vote for that full budget so that everyone would incur if passed a nine hundred and fifty dollar increase on their taxes.
Correct, Peg. We, we are recommending to town meeting a four percent tax increase and a nine percent increase for BMS. And on the floor of town meeting, people can get up and make amendments to either increase or decrease really any number in the budget. It's not often that by the time we get to town meeting, there's major bodies have different recommendations. So here, there is a recommendation from school board, which is different than that from FinCom and Select Board.
Yeah, and we had talked about, Scott, to fill you in too, we had talked about having a separate pre-town meeting where we just focus on the budget and you get the word out, paper, print, Pony Express to everybody in town, you know, separate from our coffee talk to go through this. So if there's questions, no one's making changes on the fly with the numbers at town meeting, because we had enough trouble keeping up. I can't imagine trying to pull in two to three hundred people and watching the numbers change on an Excel spreadsheet, so.
So we have a budget at this point.
We have a balanced budget at sixteen million, four hundred and one thousand and fifty dollars.
Kristen, what was that increase from last year?
That is an increase of, so last year's budget was, it's a big increase. Last year's budget was fourteen million, seven twenty-eight, four eighty-five. So that is an increase of, hold please. Make sure this is correct. Sixteen point three percent. Nope, sorry, that's the department one. Hold on.
And then we.
Six point.
Peter, you have a quick, quick comment. Yeah, we could bring Peter forward for his comment or question.
I just have, I do have a quick question, which is, does this require an override?
It does not.
Why?
The town has an excess levy capacity. We could actually increase the budget significantly higher and not need an override. Because we've. It gets triggered when, so every year, the, the property, your ability goes up by two and a half percent. And we have between what we have been taking from taxpayers and what we could take from taxpayers, there's about a million and a half dollar difference. This eats into that a chunk, but we could still do more of this. So the town, because it's been fiscally conservative for the last several decades, we have the ability to do these things without requiring an override.
Great, thanks.
I think it's going to be also important, too, when we have, if we have our pre-town meeting, like to show those figures, Kristen, and there was a nice little graphic that Amy did as well, which showed, you know, department increase, department increase year-over-year, blink, you know, school increase and to say, hey, it's a six point four last year to this year, you know, two years ago to last year, it was blah, 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 you know, back, you know, back, because there's another misconception that the schools have never had an increase, excuse me, in their budgets. So we need to be able to show that information that that is an incorrect statement that's flitting through the town to show people that, yes, you know, we have gone in above the two and a half percent. We were at the same discussion last year, not as bad, but we were still doing that. So that, that's the message that needs to get out, because I don't want people to think that we're shafting the school. We're actually not, and we're doing our best.
Absolutely. And as Scott was just saying, there's your excess levy capacity down at the bottom here. With the four percent increase, you have eaten into it, but you're still at just over one point six million, one point six three.
And I think that's important to show, too, to let people know that your taxes could go a lot higher, but
Yep.
It'll, you know, meet us halfway. Let's, let's work together and not against.
So the town warrant, we can move on to that.
All right. So.
We, we, as you say, we have that special one, we might have opened the warrant to discuss, but let's just look at the current articles first, so then we can get on to that one.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody has comments. This has gone through a review by KP. There were some questions that we've gone back and forth on, so there will likely be another version coming back of this week, but the meat and bones and potatoes are in here at this point. So I think with, if you don't have any questions, I mean, this really hasn't changed since.
The fire, the, right, the fire pumper engine.
That one.
Is, is, is that, is that going to be on it or is that not going to be on it?
So FinCom, I'm sorry, Capitol actually just met. And what they voted was to recommend that the fire pumper does go on there. They are recommending that it be funded entirely out of public safety mitigation if we have the Highland Commons money in before May one. We're hoping we will. We sent a bill out March eighth. They're pretty timely with their payment. If not, their recommendation was to use the three hundred and seven that was going into capital stabilization to pay that, and we would adjust at fall town meeting, just so we can execute a contract. Unfortunately, we can't wait till the fall, the prices going up before then.
Yep.
So that was their recommendation tonight. And so the plan you see before you is going to be the nine eleven, nine hundred, plus the fire pumper. They allowed for eight hundred and eighty thousand. The chief is actually working with another company. They come in slightly lower.
Is there anything else that warrants, you think you need feedback from us? It looks like some are just quick questions to makers of some of the articles for clarification.
Right.
Ready?
I, I think we're very close. I, you know, we got clarification, their FinCom had some questions on CPA and Tim Wheeler was kind enough to answer those on Wednesday. Town Council had some questions for Planning Board to make sure those articles were written correctly. But for you folks, I have to say, other than the budget, it's, it's a relatively straightforward town meeting.
Yep, it does. Okay, so we've opened up the warrant to potentially add an article. It is whether or not to add an article that would set up a, a special, a, a fund, for lack of a better term, from free cash for, let's say, there, there's a number that's in panty ride. Is it three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand-ish for special ed at the schools. So that, that, because some of their increase is not their core operations, especially that might just be a one-year thing and gets us over, because the state does reimburse us somewhat on special ed after the fact. And that whether or not an article, so if the special ed costs don't come to fruition, we've not. Um, and that whether or not an article, so if the special ed costs don't come to fruition, we've not um, uh, uh, where there's not money that, that's been overgiven to the schools, but if it does come to fruition and they really need it, there's a pool so that the, the students who might need some special ed might have some act, we have to, the schools have some access to some funds. Um, there is, uh, i- if I can say it, there is some worries, because if the budget passed as is, and this money could be useful, if somehow on the floor they get the, the fears of the doubt that, that the floor, they might increase it to the one point, the four point three million, and then also go for this money, where we've now given them even more than they've asked for. Um, I want to have some, some small faith in voters that if, if we've increased the taxes by a large chunk, that then this becomes more moot, uh, and we try to pass over it or argue against it on the floor, but I, 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 I personally would love to have the option. I know FinCom was split about this, uh, so they do not have a positive or negative recommendation on it, but they were two to two, so. Uh, we'll honestly let folks know that's where it was at. Um, I, I don't know formally, Chris, your and Peg's sort of feelings about this.
Well, after sitting through the discussion at the Finance Committee meeting, um, the Finance Committee voted two to two, which is actually a not passing
Right.
vote. Um, I, I really, if we knew it was a one-time thing, Scott, I would probably be in favor of it, but we don't know that. And I think that next year could be just as bad. I, I don't think we want to deplete everything that we have um, at, in this first year. So that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, and I mean, I was just taking down some notes. I mean, all along, our point of view in, in finance, uh, FinCom, the numbers moved all over the place, um, from meeting to meeting, week to week. Uh, there was a resistance to put in any type of revenue increase, even though Governor Healy, um, you know, knows that this is a statewide issue, it's just not Broom Wilson, you know, that we're running into, that we think that there will be additional monies coming through, uh, the confidence value again for me, because the figures switch all the time is low. Um, and even though, yeah, I would lean on the voters to say, hey, we've just jacked our uh, uh, taxes by a thousand dollars, um, and here's three hundred, and even though we need the bills to be able to spend that money, at this point in time, I'm not willing to put um, my hand up for that type of risk.
I, I wanted us to at least discuss it. Uh, I, I don't feel so strongly about it. Uh, I, I've said previously, I have a confidence issue just because I'm, I just, it, it, I, I wish I felt better about it, but, but I don't. So I, I don't think we're adding a more, what, more article.
No.
Um, I, I think that it is okay for a motion to close the warrant.
So I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Seconded.
Uh, Hawkins Eye?
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Um, I think, uh, uh, Kristen, once you have sort of the last little, uh, I, I, I trust that the remaining stuff, I guess I can even see the questions, the Google Doc, they're all sort of uh, typographical and clarification sort of stuff, uh, that once you get those clarified, I think it is ready to just go.
Yeah, I would.
You have a budget, you have a warrant.
Thank you. I, and I'd like for us to take a vote on the third so that we can get it out.
On the what?
A, a vote on the third to sign the warrant, um, for this.
Oh, next week, next week.
The third what? Sorry, on, on the, on people.
The third draft, the third draft, we're gonna sign that one.
We've been way past that many times.
And. Well, and there's a good chance, actually, this could, we are planning a meeting in person, so when we pass the warrant to sign, we can actually pass it around and actually sign it at the meeting.
There you go. We'll have it ready.
Uh, great. I think that is it for old business then, correct?
I believe, oh, oh, one question. Um, Capital wanted to know, I guess they normally present their budget to you. I told them I kinda did it. Um, they said they're willing to come to your next meeting if you'd like them to.
I think we're, we're probably good.
Uh, I think we're good at this point, because even if I had big questions, it's too late to make any sort of changes, and so I, I have full faith in those volunteers. They've done some great stuff today. We've seen their numbers. Um, I'm good at the moment.
And are, are we, what are we doing about the fire truck?
Adding it.
Adding it.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I missed that. I probably was trying to get an extra dog bed.
Yeah. No, we're gonna add it, and hopefully the money comes in from Highland Commons to fully fund it. And if not, then we'll use the three oh seven that Capital was gonna put into stabilization and then kind of work backwards when the check comes in.
Similar to what we did for the ambulance.
Sounds good. Great.
Uh, so new business, Kristen, uh, health insurance renewal, which you teased us about earlier.
I did. All right, I'm, I'm gonna give you a high-level overview. I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail, but I'm gonna keep it quick. Um, overall, the town was facing a twenty-seven percent increase in health insurance due to a high number of claims, and they look, they go back three years. Um, fortunately, we're part of a pool of cities and towns through Maya, and they capped the premium increase for all communities at ten and a half percent for twenty-four. Uh, we are not alone. They said we're in good company. Nishoba um, has a collaborative that is up thirteen percent, and the GIC is up anywhere from four to ten percent, depending on the plan option chosen. The town has not faced many increases over the past decade, so plan redesign really hasn't been looked at. Um, the IAC met several times, both with Maya and Cooking Company, who is our health, uh, and they kind of are our broker. And the IAC has unanimously recommended what they call the Green Plan or the Middle Plan. I can bring it up here, actually, if that's helpful. Um, it has a two hundred and fifty, seven fifty dollar deductible. And to add that deductible, they're asking that a health insurance-only flex spending plan with a maximum cost to the town of one thousand, seven hundred dollars be added. Um, it's, you know, gonna save the town approximately thirty-three thousand dollars to do this plan redesign. The employees only save about eleven thousand because it's a seventy-five, twenty-five. So, um, I do see it as a sign of good faith from the employees, working to try to save the town, um, some money there. So let me just quickly pull up the plan for you, so you get a sense of what it looks like here.
Kristen, you say that we're moving into an FSA or having an FSA available?
They're asking that because of the deductible, that we do an FSA on the health insurance only, not the dependent care. And the cost for that would be one thousand, seven hundred if every single eligible employee enrolled, which is highly unlikely, so it will be less. Um, but in order to do this deduct, but doing the deductible plan saves thirty-three thousand dollars for the town, so I would say it far offsets the seventeen hundred that they're requesting go along with this. Share this here. So this is, let me make this a little bit bigger. This is the middle plan that we're talking about. Nope, that's not the middle plan. Hold on. This, here it is.
Yep.
Is the middle plan that we're talking about. Um,
The, the, the.
On the bottom.
Oh, it's, you know why? It's because I have my laptop up and it's covering the bottom half of my screen, sorry. There we go. Okay, so this is what they call the Green Plan or the Deductible Plan. Basically, same out-of-pocket maximum adds a two fifty, seven fifty deductible. The deductible only applies to emergency room, hospital admission, outpatient surgery, or high-tech imaging, which are MRIs, CAT scans, et cetera. After you've met the deductible, you go back to the fifty-dollar copay for ER, which is how it's always been, and you go back to zero dollars for hospital, outpatient, and imaging. There is no cost increase and no deductible on office visits, preventative services, specialists, or prescriptions. Those all remain the same. So basically, your changes are just what's here in bold, the two fifty, seven fifty, and that only applies to the items that are bold in the middle um, of that middle column. So basically, what does that mean in terms of dollars and in terms of savings? That instead of a ten and a half percent increase, that would lower the town's premium increase to four point seven percent. Uh, a ten and a half increase would uh, result in a thirty dollar per month increase for a single plan or a seventy-three dollar per month increase for a family plan. If we go with this new deductible plan, you're only gonna see a thirteen dollar a month increase or a two hundred and four dollar or a, uh, which is a savings of seventeen dollars or two hundred and four per year over the ten and a half percent increase. For a family, that's a five hundred and four dollar savings. So if you look at it, the deductible either is a wash or is nearly a wash because the deductible's two fifty, you're gonna save two hundred and four dollars by going with this middle plan in your premium savings. The two fifty is per individual, so if you have a family plan, but there's only two people on it, your deductible is only five hundred, which would be covered um, by your five hundred and four dollars in savings. So in most cases, the premium savings offset or nearly offset the cost of the deductible, but the employees obviously had concerns about having to come up with two hundred and fifty dollars at a time. So the IAC voted to recommend we start the Flex Spending Plan, which would allow employees to put money pre-tax on a card available at the beginning of every fiscal year and deducted from each paycheck. Um, and as I mentioned before, the cost to the town for just the health on the Flex Spending was seventeen hundred dollars if all eligible employees enroll, less if less employees take it. That's my spiel for you.
I mean, the nice thing about an FSA is that, well, in the companies that I've worked for, your FSA was fully funded, so you know, if you pick five hundred dollars for your FSA, then on day one of whenever the plan kicks in, you have that five hundred dollars. Um, you know, the thing is, it's, it's a risk to the town, you know, a small risk to say, here, everybody, here's all your FSA money, and everyone goes out and spends it, and then everyone quits. Um, you know, the town is out of pocket, but you know, it's normally not like that, you know, you chip away at it, you chip away at it. You know, the nice thing, you go to the doctor's office, they say, hi, you know, your copay is, you hand them the card, they go and there's really no money out of your pocket, you know, per se, so. I've had an FSA for years and absolutely love it, you know. Um, Kristen, on the FSA, is it a use it or lose it uh, at the end of next count, uh, next uh, fiscal year, or is there like a grace period where you have time to like run it, but the expenses have to be within that timeframe?
So there is a carryover period to the next fiscal year. Um, I believe it's ninety days. I just have to confirm that date. Um, and it can be used, now they've changed it, it can be used on pharmacy items too again. So, which is really good. So say you've got a hundred bucks left, you can go buy Band-Aids and Tylenol and whatever.
But make sure, make sure they're FSA uh, eligible, because you can't buy a Band-Aid, but you can buy a medicated Band-Aid. So there is an fsastore.com, seriously, because I had to like blow through money at the end of my last year. Um, and they'll give you a list of items that are applicable, and you can just sit there and go point, 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 and they show up in the mail, so. Um, you know, like glasses, you use them towards glasses. They can't be sunglasses because you look cool. They have to be prescription glasses, you know. But well, people, people have tried it. You know, they, they go to the dentist, and I want my smile to be whiter, so whiten my teeth. No, 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 that doesn't work, but you know, covers your other uh, dental stuff.
Right. Yeah, and I kind of gave an example. I broke it down. So, you know, we get paid weekly right now. So say you put five hundred bucks on your Flex Spending Card, you get it all July one, and you get nine dollars and sixty-two cents taken out pre-tax every week. So there's also that pre-tax savings too. And I, you know, I think it's a good show of faith. I mean, it was, it was a hard sell a little bit, because to go to that deductible when you haven't had it is kind of a, it's a barrier, you know, it's a mental hurdle, I think, for folks to say, well, now I have a deductible, I never had one before. So it was really intrinsically tied to being able to offer that Flex Spending, um, so that they could not worry about having to come up with two hundred and fifty dollars all of a sudden.
I, I think it's a great compromise and, and like it.
And, and I did thank them, I think I thanked them on behalf of the board because they worked so well together to get to the point that they are right now.
Yeah, I was, I was really impressed. Um, you know, they had to take it back to their memberships and talk it through, and some people, you know, were on the fence and for it. I mean, there's still, you know, oh, there's still some people that maybe were like, hmm, I don't know how I feel about the deductible. But overall, I think there was an understanding that there's a huge savings to the town. It's close to being a wash, if not a wash for the employees, and um, they understand the situation that we're in budgetar, budgetarily, if you will, this year, so.
Yeah.
I give them a lot of credit.
Uh, good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Green Plan. Is that good enough?
Yep.
Seconded.
Can you vote on the FSA too?
And the FSA, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, the recommendations of the interest, uh, advisory committee, yep.
Right, an FSA for those who might be listening and wonder what it is. It's short for Flexible Spending Account. Um, seconded.
Uh, Hawkins Eye?
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
I was trying to come up with something really fun that FSA could stand for, but it just, my brain couldn't be quite fast enough.
Yeah, you don't want to go there.
Fun, superlative, super, but I, but I couldn't go over there. Anyway.
We'll give you a week, Scott, so we're in person, and then you gotta come up with an FSA acronym.
Uh, notice to intent, a notice to, notice of intent to appoint.
Okay, I'm really excited about this one. Um, we have found an admin for Highway. Um, it's been an extensive search. It started last year, and it was more important to find the right person, because Fred had actually been doing the admin work and doing it well um, for quite some time by coming in at six AM and staying very late at night. Um, but I would recommend Kara Wiseman. She lives in Westboro, and she is just, I think, fantastic. She has the qualifications and the background in payroll, payables. She has a great personality. Uh, her and Fred seemed like they would get along really well. We did the interview together, and we both agreed that she would be a great fit for the position. It's a ten-hour-a-week position. Um, the hours are a little bit um, to be decided. I think we're, I think it's gonna look like uh, three, two, three-hour days and one four-hour day, like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday kind of deal. But there's a little bit of flexibility in the hours there as we kind of develop this position and see how it goes. So um, I am pleased to recommend Kara Wiseman to the board.
So I would make motion to um, hire Kara Wiseman as the Highway Admin Assistant uh, with, she had a very nice, very good resume.
I'll second it.
Great. Uh, great to keep filling these positions. Hawkins Eye?
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Uh, I think that brings us to boards, questions, comments, and layers on updates.
Okay. Um, well, Kristen covered the IAC meeting very well in our agenda. Um, so the only thing I have is a note from the town clerk that dog licenses are now due. Fines will kick in May first.
Oh, good. I thought it was April first. I was trying to figure out how to get over there like tomorrow or the next day. Uh, Peg?
I only have two sticky notes. Hey, this isn't bad for what my notes usually look like. All right, um, so the ADA grant, uh, Kristen, did you get the real looking PDF?
I sent it back to you signed.
Excellent. So, uh, we just signed, thank you, Kristen, uh, to have John Electric Guy, who was also one of our alternate uh, electric inspectors to come in and install electrical door openers. So we'll do the one coming into the vestibule, and then the one coming into the um, uh, into the hallway. And uh, next year, hopefully, or this year, hopefully, we'll get a bigger grant, and then we'll put the electric openers to get into fire and EMS. Uh, so yay, and thank you, John. Um, Plumbing, I'm gonna meet with Kristen next week. When Plumber Guy came, Adam, uh, Plumber Guy came, uh, he gave us a quote for like everything, you know, uh, fixes to the cells with the sinks and other stuff that we didn't ask for, so while he was looking around, he was just making notes. So I'll meet with Kristen next week, uh, probably go back to him and ask him if he can just give us a quote. Unfortunately, we're only going to be able to do a bathroom. So I'm thinking it's the one when you walk in, that's the public, that's the public one, um, you know, to fix. So we can get that out of the way. Uh, Kristen, since our senior work-off person is okay with receiving a check, do I need to bother to send any type of like invoice to see if it's approved for ADA Evan Guy?
Um, I think that he would want to make sure, oh, you mean like a payroll check?
As opposed. Yeah, because, because, yeah, where we thought that we could say, hey, uh, senior work-off equals X hours at X amount equals X dollars, and we were gonna see if that was. And we were gonna see if that was covered in the ADA grant, so there's really like no money out, it's just money off of taxes. But where senior work art person said, that's fine, cut me a check, do I need to bother to? Send anything back to Evan ADA guy?
So he's gonna just be paid through abatement? Through through senior worker, he's not gonna get separately paid for this?
No, he's gonna, no, he's gonna get paid separately, so he does ten hours, he gets a check for one fifty. Compared to trying to figure out how to do it through eighty eight, uh, for the abatement.
So if he's gonna get paid, I, uh, through payroll, I don't know if that's sufficient. I think we just want to check with the state and make sure that a payroll, um, stub, if you will, is sufficient for them. I don't know if they wanted him paid more as a contractor, where they would want him to fill out like an invoice himself. And submit it to the town to get a check from the town. That's the one question I would ask.
All right, I will reach out to Evan again. He's kind of waiting on, uh, stuff for me. Remind me, when we chat about plumber guy, uh, he had put down in his quote that he wanted an account set up at FW Web. I don't know if the town has one. I don't know, uh, what June needs to do to get that done. I don't know if maybe because he uses it. Things are a wee bit cheaper than if any one of us walked in and said, hey, give me a, you know, give me a faucet. I don't know. Uh, Concom, uh, I'll go to their meeting on Wednesday. There was a request for like a walkthrough, so the land behind, uh, Wilsons. That everyone knows as Wilsons. Uh, that there was a company interested in doing a sidewalk to go in and possibly start testing some soil. Uh, so there were concerns by a couple of the Concom folks, so they were gonna go on a walk with them. And see exactly what was needed to be done with that. Um, also on Concom, it came up at our meeting. Our meeting, our joint meeting, uh, with finance on Wednesday in regard to the. Uh, grant that we were gonna get to cover the purchase of Horseshoe Pond and the paperwork apparently has not been submitted. Yet by Concom, so you know, that's a chunk of money that the town doesn't have yet. So I'm gonna ask where they are in that process. Uh, supposedly it was an SVT holdup, don't know specifically, but I will. Um, dig and find out where that is, because boy, that would be really nice to get that money back.
Uh, that ARPA money, Peg?
No, that's the, um, remember that was the eight hundred or six hundred thousand that we voted last year to approve to buy Horseshoe Pond. But then, um, they got a grant from the state, Margaret and Concom went up to basically get that money back. Well, we haven't gotten that money back yet. The paperwork hasn't been submitted for it, so. You know me, you know me, gotta find that money. Um. Historical, I met with, uh, two of their members to show them what was in the, uh, what was hidden below the stairs. At the town hall. And really, it was just like a box of old books of, uh, talking about the school, uh, when they were first thinking about building it. So, uh, they were gonna bring it back to their committee as a whole to talk about if they wanted, honestly, it's a box. It's a box that I can like literally pick up and take out and take to the town offices. For, um, historical, when they meet to look at. Once they clear that, then comes in the request to Kristen and Fred to clear that bottom out. Because hey, we found bags of recyclables in there. That shows you that people were just open the door and chucking crap in there. Uh, for that. Um. Big thank to, uh, Mr. Hanks on the letter that came through from a resident in regard to lights being on at Dagnow. Uh, liquors overnight across the street from the old Flat Penny. So thank you, Mr. Hanks. Um. This past weekend was a retirement, uh, going away party for Bob, uh, librarian guy. Uh, very well attended, but Kristen, I'm wondering. Where we've given kind of like a proclamation citation to Ken and to Dennis, can we do the same for Bob?
Sure.
Okay, I don't know when his la- his official last day is. End of the month, maybe, I don't know, um, but a great turnout. And also making Eloise happy. Uh, will be to remind people the nomination papers are open and due back to her by April eleventh. So she has time to verify the number of required signatures to run for insert position here.
Okay, Peg, did you go to the? Uh, thing at nineteen Carter for the superintendent?
Oh, no, not the superintendent. I couldn't get out of work unfortunately for that, so.
Okay.
I think there's another one coming up.
Next Saturday. I think I'll try.
This Saturday or next Saturday?
I think it's next Saturday.
Not the first?
I don't think so. I I can look real quick.
Yeah, cuz I, um, I had also heard that there was some discussion about some presentation that Link was gonna have some presentation on.
What is, it is this Saturday.
Okay.
At eleven o'clock.
All right, yeah, um, I'm out of town, but, um, yeah, I don't know, Kyle, Kyle. Kyle, I can't remember his last name, apologies if he's watching, um. Had, I had heard had made mention that there would be some informational sessions on the budget, so. I can find him on Facebook and reach out to him and see if we can find those dates, cuz again, uh, the more we educate, the better we'll be.
So we can at least advertise them.
Yep, absolutely. That's all I got. So Kristen, I'll find a date to pop on down next week and we can figure out, uh, plumber guy.
Okay.
And get that approved and then see what we have for leftover fundage. To maybe, uh, Victoria had mentioned maybe some, I should call them pocket talkers. You know, so people could put them in and put the headphones on and also some magnifying glasses, because we want to get that down to about five to ten bucks. To give back to the state, so. See what we can do, cuz June is coming around the corner, not our June, but the month of.
All right. So again.
Um, Kristen, there, you have an, I've not set you up for this. You have an announcement about how payments can be made in town offices?
I in fact do. Um, we are now taking credit cards and debit cards at the town offices. At the treasure collector's office. So if you come to the municipal offices at twenty three Linden Street. Up to the second floor to the tax collector's window, uh, it's your first window on the right. They will take your taxes via debit or credit card payment. These same fees do apply that apply online. But we've had a number of people who have come all the way down here, only to be told, go back home and pay online. And we don't want to do that to people, so now you can pay here.
Um, and then, uh, reminder to folks watching, uh, is that starting next week. The Select Board will be meeting in person, uh, at town offices. I don't know if that means it's gonna be a Zoom link, is there gonna, so, I don't think there'll be Zoom links, you can come down and see us, it will be. Live broadcast, probably not live broadcast, at least, at least recorded broadcast for town office, uh, uh, still available on the YouTube channel.
Yeah, we unfortunately don't have hybrid capabilities at this point, but we are working on it. I just put the cable HD and hybrid. Uh, scope back out for quotes. Um, as we didn't receive any the first time around, but, uh, there were a couple of questions that I think we've addressed that should fix that. Um, but, and it will be filmed for YouTube that can be watched later, but we will be in the selectmen's office and all are welcome.
So I have a question.
I was just gonna say, it'd just be nice to get some feedback from people too, as far as. You know, the in-person meetings and all that, since we will be able to do, um, hybrid meetings eventually. But, um, we, yeah, fingers crossed, but, um, we do have the ability through the state for another. Two years?
Uh, the governor has, uh, did, did she sign it today?
I'm not sure.
Uh, she's waiting to sign it. I think she is going to sign it. It's gone to her desk as it's been approved by the House and Senate. So hopefully any day now, they're going to send it through, uh, some point in twenty five.
Yes, it was like March of twenty five.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, quick question on that, if, uh, when you guys do the agendas, if you think that there's anything that needs to be shared. Could we possibly shift and go down into the hearing room so that you can put it up on the screen? So that if folks are coming to the meeting, you know, that's great, we're gonna have laptops and handouts, we're gonna see it. But the folks in the audience won't be able to, so, you know.
Either that or we occasionally used to, you know, run off a couple of copies.
I I'd be happy to bring that TV that's on wheels down into the selectmen's, the select board office.
Okay. All right, that'll work. Oh, there's a hand up in the audience. Peter.
Hey, Peter.
Hey there. So are you suggesting that, um, the sign off will be for hybrid or virtual only or both?
You mean the, the, uh, the governor?
Yes, the, the bill allows, I thought, still virtual only if someone would like. I think we're trying to do a hybrid, because hybrid is sort of the best of both worlds, it allows people to still attend virtually and interact. But still have people present if necessary.
Right.
Uh, the, that's a select board or all boards and committees?
Uh, all boards and committees.
Well, it's, it's our choice. It's individual.
Right.
Any's choices.
Got it. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yep, yep.
I did just pull it up so I could read it. The, the final bill that's gone to the governor's desk would allow remote and hybrid meeting options for public bodies. Through March thirty first of twenty twenty five. Um, the reduced quorums and the expedited outdoor dining permit process.
And I, I was looking for the, I was looking for the special ed, but.
Yeah.
Didn't see it.
Not in this one, so the special ed was actually, yeah, was the, uh, that sup- I know, that's really interesting. They did apply for that, by the way. I meant to tell you, I spoke with Nancy today, they did submit an application for that supplemental funding. And it can be used to prepay, uh, for FY twenty four.
Good.
If they get what they requested, they would only get unfortunately though, a hundred and sixty thousand, so it's not gonna fully solve the problem.
Okay. I don't know if Peter put his hand back up or if he didn't take it down.
All right, sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I did put it down, did put it back up. Uh, reduced quorum, can somebody explain that to me?
Reduced quorums for open town meetings. Uh, there was a certain percentage that quorums could be reduced, um, under. The governor's legislation, I'd have to.
I think it only affects towns that have quorum requirements in their bylaws for town meeting.
And, and we don't.
And we are not, and we are not one of those towns. We do not have a quorum.
It doesn't, doesn't apply to boards or committees.
It does not.
No, just open town meeting with quorums.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Sure. Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse, I was just reading.
Yep. Um, I think that's our agenda for tonight, as my clock chimes eight o'clock.
Yay, Scott. Woo.
We had to make up for the last couple of weeks, so, uh, we will, uh. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Uh, uh, thanks everyone, we'll see people in person next week, Hawkins eye?
If I.
Stone eye.